Good evening, welcome to the August 3rd Board of Selectmen's meeting. If you'd please stand and join us in the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution.
This meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be shown on local access television. First on the agenda is the town clerk.
Yes, so the first thing on the agenda is I gave your, you guys the warrant for the state primary, which is on Tuesday, September 6th. It's from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Spring Street School. So I need you to sign the warrant so that I can post it next week. So the voters will know that there's a primary coming up. Although they do know because I've been getting a lot of vote by mail applications, so they do know.
All right.
The next thing that was on the agenda is the early voting. I wanted to, this is just FYI for you guys to put out that they're having early voting for the primary. It starts on August 27th, which is a Saturday. There will be no voting on Sunday, the 28th, but then it runs Monday through Friday the following weekend. The schedule's up on your screen there and I have posted it on the calendar and on the website and I will have signs up at the town hall telling the hours. It's going to be at the town hall in the McDonald Brown Conference Room.
Okay, thank you. You have a list of poll workers?
The poll workers every year, although Mass General Law requires that you appoint the poll workers. So it's that time of year again. I gave you a list of poll workers. I added one on the top, Peter Turner.
Yeah, thank you.
Because he must've got cut off or something, but he's one of my warden's. So I just asked that you appoint all these people as poll workers.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint these with the addition of Peter Turner?
So moved.
Second?
On our favor.
Aye. And then the final thing is the, the new vote act that was just passed through legislation. And one of the things that it did is it changed the way that the police officer gets assigned for the polls. It was always, I would call the police department and say, you know, I need a policeman to work the polls and the police of ch- the chief, yeah. Now I can't say it.
Police chief?
Yeah, thank you. My goodness. Would say, you know, they'd appoint someone, someone would fill in for that duty and they changed it to you, for you guys to appoint it, which kind of makes absolutely no sense. So what I'm asking from you is to take a vote to put it back into the town clerk and the police chief's hands to appoint them instead of having to come to every time there's an election to assign a police officer to polls.
Okay, I'm absolutely fine with that. Is there a motion or any questions or comments?
Any reason why they changed it? Any idea what the?
I, no. It's just, it's, I don't know. They could, so they did, you know?
Something to do that day of the week.
Yeah.
So you have to come each year or this is just a one time?
If you take a vote that going forward, that it, you're putting that responsibility back into my, well, the town clerk's hands and the police chief's hands, so that going forward, you know, whoever that person is, not, not saying me and Vic, but then I, it's just, you've taken a vote going forward, so unless they change it again down the line, I think we could go, you know, so I don't have to come to you.
Okay, so moved.
Uh, second? What am I saying?
You are moving it.
I'm, I'll move it, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And I didn't know, I gave you the, the act, so I didn't know if you had any questions on it, if there were any, you had any questions on the changes. Basically, they made early voting and vote by mail permanent now for all state and federal elections. And vote by mail is an opt-out thing for local elections. Otherwise, that's basically the changes. So now it's just going to be, it's here to stay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the DPW lever. Uh, there's still some items outstanding. Is there a motion to table that?
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
All right. Ratify Lorna Brazil's employment as the activities coordinator, newsletter editor for the COA. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Did you want to say anything? We've all had a chance to look at your resume, but if you had anything to add or anything?
The resume pretty much says it.
All right. Anyone have any questions or anything?
No.
No.
Thank you.
All right. So is there a motion to ratify Lorna's employment?
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And, um, up next is Ashley Warren for employment as head of technical services for the library. I'm a current employee for, what, since 2017, is that right? Did you or the library want to say anything?
I'm all set. You want to say anything now?
No, we're excited to keep Ashley here.
This is a promotion to add to this.
Congratulations, Ashley.
So now we have to backfill her position.
All right, any comments or your motion?
No, congratulations.
And so moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all for coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
Marcy Lee has volunteered to be the ADA coordinator, or while there is a small stipend with that, this position has been vacant for quite some time, I think. Is there a motion to appoint Marcy Lee as the coordinator?
So I just want to add some clarification to that. Originally, Marcy had sent in a letter offering to take the position and there were, an issue came to my attention that the committee, at least one committee, was not satisfied with the fact that they didn't get a chance to speak with that person first. So Marcy rescinded her offer. Unfortunately, without someone in this position, they're not in, they're not, it's not possible for them to move forward with completing everything for a grant or at least getting it started. And the deadline, I believe, is at the end of September. And while we're not guaranteed the grant, at the same time, the opportunity exists. Thousands of dollars could be available. Marcy sent a letter, an email to me today saying she would, she would fill the, she would be willing to take this opportunity as an interim position. And I think this, I think that's a good compromise. In the meantime, that committee can seek out someone else if that's what they choose to do. But Marcy is bright, articulate, willing to do the work, and I think she'll do a great job at it.
Okay, I believe this is an annual appointment anyway, right? We appoint this every June 4th, July 1st, right?
That is correct. And the other part to that is in order to pay stipends, I just want to give the board a FYI. We don't have it budgeted, so we'll have to do an end-of-year transfer like we're going to do in this year for the past year. So next year, we'll have to do it because we don't have that funded at this point. I mean, my, I've done a quick little survey and I think $3,000. We were going to offer $2,500 to Mike White as a stipend, but he's an employee. And so my feeling is, is that he has a town vehicle, he's already on staff whenever they have the meetings. So I think that they should probably agree a little bit of compensation for the fact that she'll be using her personal car, personal gas, that type of stuff. But I haven't discussed it with her, so you tell me what is right and obviously that's what I'll discuss with her. Just keep in mind, we'll have to do an end-of-year transfer next year to cover it.
And, and just, you know, as a side note, not as part of the vote, but to mention it, I think going forward, the ADA coordinator should be part of the building inspector's job description. I asked David if he could check out to see how, who usually carries that position in other towns. And it, it seems to be, I think mostly David, or at least frequently, is the building inspector, is what you found?
I would say, yeah, plurality of them are building commissioners.
Okay. I mean, our building inspector should have knowledge of the ADA laws. He's charged with the enforcement of ADA, so it makes sense that it's part of that person's job description.
So is in terms of compensation or stipends, I think $2,500 is fair if that's what we're going to offer, Mike? Anyone agree, disagree?
Well, this is interim. How long of a position are we talking? Are we, are we appointing her for the year?
The appointment would be through June 30th.
Correct.
Yep. And let, and if they come, if-
So it's almost, maybe just 11 months inside of 12, but-
If the committee comes forward with someone who is capable of doing the job, willing to do the job, and they want to come to us at that time, I mean, Marcy would, would gladly turn, resign if they find someone who is willing to do the job. But right now, she, she's concerned as well as I am that they need to start pursuing this grant. And they have no one right now to assist Deb Colley in doing this. And it's not something they've done in many years. They're looking at different structures in town that they want to see become ADA compliant, for which we don't have money set aside for. And it's not fair to say, well, we'll wait until we get someone in it and try for a grant another time, when they could do it now. That, you know, there's no pot of gold sitting somewhere to pay for this. And when it said that, well, the town can pay for it later, it's really, the taxpayer's going to pay for it. And they have this opportunity now. So if they find someone, three, four weeks, five weeks down the line, whenever it is, and they bring that person to us for an appointment, I'm sure Marcy would be more than willing to say, I'm glad you found someone who can help the town out and she'll be done with it. But they need, they need someone now. And, and again, I'm glad she reconsidered it and is willing to take an honest interim. And I think she'll be a valuable resource for them.
You may have already answered this. Any idea how much the grant was for, they were applying for?
So the total, I want to say the total funding out there is north of $400,000, $500,000. I think the estimate, and that's per grant. I know what we were looking at, or at least what they were looking at, was trying to get a few hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
All right, um, so back to the appointment. So is there a motion to appoint Marcy with a $2,500 stipend if that's what the board believes is the right amount?
What's the reasoning for going with a lesser amount?
Just what we offered, Mike, same amount, right?
I kind of agree, she's going to be using her car, her gas. I'd say 3,000.
I, I agree with-
Care either way, but-
I don't know if that's an amended motion or not, but I would-
I, I would like to amend the motion to be, or I make a motion to approve Marcy Lee as the interim ADA coordinator with a stipend of $3,000.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
All right, we have two vacation carryover requests, one for Bob Ross, one for Gloria Hopkins. Both fall within the allowed amount under these contracts. Is there a motion to approve those?
What they like to?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're both at five.
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great, um, Kitty Darty has submitted her retirement effective July 27th. Is there a motion to accept that?
With the letter of thanks, so moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Lorna Carroll has submitted her resignation as executive administrative secretary. Is there a motion to accept that?
So moved with a letter of thanks.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to accept meeting minutes of April 6th, 2022, and June 1st, 2022, for review.
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve meeting minutes of February 16th, 2022, March 2nd, 2022, March 16th, 2022, April 20th, 2022, May 4th, 2022, May 18th, 2022.
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Vote on FY '22 end-of-year budget transfers. We have some money coming out of benefits going to, it's up there. Open space, $43, Snow and Ice, 20, uh, $227,440, Streetlights, 6304, Southeastern, $32,061, for a total of $265,848.
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Ian, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I want to say thank you to department heads. If you look up here, Snow and Ice, we know we're going to go over. Southeastern Regional is not because they went over their budget, it was because of the way federal SRF funds were allocated, so we knew nine months ago we were going to make the transfer and we knew streetlights were low. So I just want to say thank you. Our department heads are doing a really good job of staying within their budgets.
Thank you, David. And we have the town hiring policy we had in front of us a couple of weeks ago. David, I believe there's a couple minor changes, if you just want to go over those since the last time we saw it?
Yeah, so truthfully, there's only, I'll say collectively, two changes from what was presented at the last meeting. Denise met with me last week. There was a handful of grammatical changes that we made that was not substantive in nature. And the only substantive in nature, if you want to call it that, is that I continued to use language as, so the screening committee shall, you'll see here in the middle, the screening committee shall, will condense the applicants into a manageable pool of candidates and conduct interviews. I did not have the word "and conduct interviews" because I assumed that it was an assumption that they were going to do the interviews. And Denise felt strongly that we had to add that language to make it clear that they weren't just condensing them, they were also interviewing. Other than that, there were no other changes.
Okay, thank you, David. Is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
All right, public commentary.
There's one line up top on the second page.
Oh, sorry. Oh, um, Fussin' O'Neill for Masonry Repair Repairs. David, do you want to just briefly go over this?
Yep, so town meeting award, $125,000 to repair the stone wall that has collapsed. In order to do so, we have to do some engineering and then we have to put out a bid. Fussin' O'Neill won an engineering contract with us a handful of years ago on War Memorial Park masonry work. And so we are, we're extending that. So we need to award this contract for them to do the work, bid it out so we can get a, get somebody in to be able to fix the wall.
All right, thank you. And town administration report?
Oh, I need a vote though, please.
Sorry.
I make a motion to award the engineering contract to Fussin' O'Neill for the masonry repairs at War Memorial Park.
So moved.
Second?
Second, I'm sorry.
I'm glad it's not too many.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the town administration report?
Yep, so first is, is that GPI engineering is our engineering services that is protecting the town in reference to the Route 106 Lincoln Street project. As part of that, funding was required from the developer in order to pay for all takings. But we have to hire by law an appraisal company to figure out the value of those takings and provide checks to those people that are affected. So that, they will be administered as under the engineering contract. Again, this is the company that Jim Noes works for. So we are looking to amend their engineering contract to include the value of the appraisal services, which is $48,750.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is municipal small bridge grant award. I want to give credit to Chris Santelli. He did a nice job filling out this grant. There is currently a culvert on South Elm Street. Mary, you apply very familiar with it because you drive it over every day. And that unfortunately is in disrepair. So instead of going to the town looking for money, he applied for a grant, DOT awarded it. They will pay 100% of the engineering services in order to determine how to fix the culvert. So they, you could see that there are seven different engineering companies that have been pre-vetted. They will select one of those. Tyne Bond already works with our water department, so they know the town very well. They will conduct all the work. And then from there, we will use that report to file for what we call an action grant from the state, hoping that we'll be able to secure those funds and be able to actually fix the culvert at that point. So again, positive good news. The next is the 200th anniversary. This has been a lot of work, but it's going to be a really good event. I'm looking forward to it. This is the flyer that has now been sent out to all town employees and boards and commissions and has been posted on our social media pages along with our website. It will be August 20th, basically from 1:00 to 9:00. We're in the process of inviting our food vendors, anybody that wants to sell food and beverage to be able to come down there to contact Jerry Lawrence by mid, mid-August, August 15th, I think it is. But you can see here that at 2:00, the softball games will begin. There will be two sets of games. The first one will be played between YA and the fire department. The second one, school and police. The winners will go from there and they will have a awards ceremony afterwards. There'll also be a donation from the Lions Association as part of it. 6:15, there will be a band that will play for about an hour and 45 minutes. And at 8:15, we will have fireworks. I'm going to ask you to award that contract in a moment. We do have a rain date of August 21st, but because of staffing and scheduling, we're not going to be able to do the full event. So all we would do is we would have the band start at 6:15-ish or so and then the fireworks would still go off at that point. We want to make sure that there was an exclusive 50/50 raffle for only one of our charities in town. And talking to a handful of different charities, we settled on the West Bridgewater food pantry. They're very excited, so they'll be selling tickets throughout and the proceeds will go to them. The police department will close Howard Street that day. And so people will be able to park at the middle school, high school, the Howard Street School and the Council on Aging. They'll have to access those from either 106 or from Spring Street. But the Howard Street will be closed so people can freely and safely walk with their families back and forth during the day. And the hope is, is that people will come over, they'll watch the softball games, they'll be able to eat and drink all day, they'll be able to watch the, listen to the band and then see fireworks at night. They should bring their own lawn chairs, that type of stuff. But I'm looking forward to, I think it's going to be a really good event. And on that note, we met with the state fire marshal multiple times, we met with multiple vendors. And I'm going to ask the Board of Selectmen to award the fireworks contract to Central Maine Pyrotechnics. I can tell you that what we have set up, this is going to be a great fireworks display. It'll be about 20 minutes in duration. The number of shells, what we've picked out, and we also have one extra special little that I don't want to say what it is, but that will specifically celebrate our 200th anniversary as part of it. So again, I think it's going to be a really, really neat event. But I will ask you at this point if you can take a vote to award them the pyrotechnics contract in the amount of $20,000.
So moved.
Is there a second? On our favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. Next is just an FYI, or a handful of FYIs. The legislature just approved their budget. Charlie Baker just signed it as governor. Our state aid went up a couple of thousand dollars, not enough to really move the needle. But the most important thing is nothing was cut, so we went to town meeting with. Our numbers stay the same, there'll be no adverse impact. The second is, is that at that meeting last time, I explained to you that the House version of the extension of remote meetings included the fact that at every single meeting at a public body, that the public was going to be able to interact through remote participation. And although that sounds really nice, it's physically impossible to manage. You have professional staff here, we can figure it out. But when you think about the 75 to 85 other boards and committees that we have, there is no way that our historical commission, agricultural commission, open space commission, ADA, you know, ADA, they don't have the staff. They have public meetings, if you want to attend, great. If they eventually want to put on Zoom, good. But in order to allow the public to be able to interact, we would have had to hire staff for each and every single one of those meetings. And the original legislation made clear that the state would not pay for it. So it just would have been unworkable. Fortunately, I did have a conversation with Senator Timolty. I want to say thank you to him, but the Senate version prevailed. So it's an extension of remote meetings as we know it, where there is the availability of doing a hybrid or remote, but not the requirement to allow the public to participate remotely. And another piece of good news is that for our opiate litigation, that's just part of the settlements, we are now starting to receive those funds. We received $10,718 a few weeks ago. We will receive roughly $308,000 over 18 years. That averages about 17 grand a year, but I can tell you it goes up and down, it's pretty variable. I have no idea why somebody else made that decision, not me. Two items about that though, that I think that are key, is that the legislation is determined that in order to use these funds, they must be appropriated at town meeting. So unless that changes, because there is a push from the MMA to change that, because it seems silly. Like if you go to town meeting and you say, we want to spend 10 grand, but by the way, it can only be spent for this and you must vote yes. Well, then why bring it there? Like that's, you can't use this to buy a police cruiser. You can only use it specifically for opiate-related purposes. I have a webinar with the Attorney General's Office next week. They're going to start disseminating as to what those specific uses are, because we still don't know exactly what they are. But I can tell you, the box is going to be pretty small. It's going to be specific to substance abuse issues related to opiates. And so as we get more clarity, I'll come back to the board. We'll come up with some ideas, because obviously we want to use the money. We want to use the money to the best of our ability to help those people that really are in need. Next one, FYI on EPA. This one's a little bit more difficult. I've been saying for years, and Mary, you recall, we went to this meeting where it was a shocker, right? It was not a good meeting.
It was not. They, all these rules and no money.
No money. So Mary was chair of income at the time. I knew that it was important to have other people there, because when the person was there, I still remember his name, I remember what he was, looked, what he looked like, I think I remember what he wore. Because he specifically stated at that point that under the new EPA regulations is that it would cost a town similar to West Bridgewater $100,000 to $200,000 per year to comply. There was a selectman there that was from Dayton. He was extremely vociferous in, in his displeasure. And the EPA representative literally said, we don't care. This is what it's going to cost, it is what it is. And on one time made a comment that we should be lucky because the city of Boston was going to cost about $10 million a year to comply. And we should suck it up. It's 100 grand, 200 grand, it is what it is. So John Delano, we have named as an MS4 coordinator. We pay him $80,000 a year as part of a stipend in order to do the permitting and to do some of the work. And all of our reports have been accepted by the EPA. The EPA now has just come out and has basically said in their, their newest version that they are no longer going to accept good faith efforts. Because that's what we've been putting in. We're trying to do this, we're trying, no longer acceptable, you must now start doing, not just saying you are going to do. So we'll be fine, we believe, this year. But going forward, we'll probably get to start hiring some staff and starting to put together, I don't know if you want to call it, but a team. We're going to have to do something so we can start to comply, or else we'll face fairly hefty fines. FYI, water use restrictions. Again, this is a requirement of DEP, but people should have seen flyers. Here's what it looks like. But a flyer that was sent out to all residents and is posted, that basically from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 a.m. is when you can actually hand, use a handheld hose in order to be able to water, but you're not going to be able to use sprinklers nonstop. There's going to be restrictions on it. Unfortunately, we're in a drought and we are in a serious drought. I have a meeting with MEMA on it tomorrow, because some wells in the state are actually starting to go dry. And I can tell you, ours at Manly Street is actually getting very, very low. So we are in a drought, it's a real problem. But as this memo also stipulates, regardless of we're in a drought, DEP is taking a more aggressive action going forward as to what people can do. as to what people can do for water because they wanna be able to conserve water in the long term.
Di- David, just for clarification, handheld hose anytime five PM to nine PM, correct?
Five PM to nine AM.
For a handheld hose, okay.
Yep, if you wanna go at two AM in the morning with a handheld, you can.
I don't plan on it, but-
But you can. Um, so, uh, they put the restrictions out there, there is a hundred dollar fine, again, that's set by DEP. Nobody wants to go fining people, we're just hoping people will comply. And the last is just the use of town roads from Rodman's kids, I signed off on that.
Good. Thank you, David. Is there any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Aye.